Here we go. Call the meeting to order. As is our custom, would you all stand and please face the flag as we say the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Jeff, do you have anything to add to the agenda this evening?
No, no additions.
Does anyone? Having not heard, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
I'll make a motion.
Julian on the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Luke. Other discussion? All in favor of the agenda approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carry. Schedule presenters. Jeff is going to speak to us about the statute which you're reading here and the public testimony opportunity at the end of that.
Yes.
I'm going to turn it to you.
During this past legislative session at the end of May, the legislature did pass Minnesota Statute 126(c) seventeen subdivision nine b, which allows school boards to renew an expiring referendum once with this new statute. Minnesota Statute 126(c) seventeen subdivision nine b sets forth the following requirements to renew an expiring referendum. The per pupil amount of the referendum is the same as the amount expiring, or for an expiring referendum that was adjusted annually by the rate of inflation, the same as the per pupil amount of the expiring referendum adjusted annually for inflation in the same manner as if the expiring referendum had continued. The term of the renewed referendum is no longer than the initial term approved by the voters. The school board has held a meeting and allowed public testimony on the proposed renewal, and the expiring referendum has not been previously renewed under Minnesota Statute 126(c) seventeen subdivision nine b, which is what we are enacting tonight. So basically, I'm asking the board, after public testimony, to renew our existing operating levy, which is set at $500 per pupil without an inflationary factor in it. So we have to renew it without an inflationary factor. More to come on that. But at this time, I'm asking the board to renew our existing operating levy in the amount of $500 per pupil without an inflationary factor for the next ten years, starting at the expiration of this current levy, which would be next year. Is that correct? Josh?
Yes.
Will there be, if we do run a referendum, that does not impact this in the slightest?
No. What we'd probably end up doing if we run an operating levy in the fall is that we would revoke and replace this. So we would revoke the current $500 that we would renew tonight and ask the public to replace it with a higher, more than likely, operating levy with an inflationary factor tied into it. Because inflationary factors were not a part of operating levies when this was originally passed, ever. Well, no, it's not new this year, but it's been allowed to happen within the past decade.
So we don't currently have inflation factored into our $500 per pupil, so we can't renew it with an inflation factor.
That is correct. So it would just be the same as it currently is.
So I don't often see the term "public testimony," but that would be any inquiries or any statements made to us by the public.
Yes, if there, we need to give them a chance to talk tonight prior to your vote.
If there is anyone here that wishes to speak to the board about the Minnesota statute that's shown here, now is your opportunity. Having heard nothing, I would look for a motion to approve the expiring, the renewal of the expiring referendum.
It is a resolution, so keep that in mind.
Yep, of course. Motion second.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Brian?
I'll second.
Seconded by Luke. Further discussion? Clerk, would you read the resolution?
Resolution relating to renewal of an expiring referendum. Be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number two fifty-two, state of Minnesota, as follows. The board hereby determines and declares that it is necessary and expedited for the school district to extend and renew the general education revenue provided by an expiring referendum passed by the voters of the school district on November third, two thousand fifteen. This referendum was passed with an amount of five hundred per adjusted pupil unit and for a term of ten years. The term of the renewed referendum will be ten years, beginning taxes payable two thousand twenty-six, and I'd like a vote. Brian?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Clinton?
Yes.
And I am also yes.
It passes by a six-zero vote. Public input. Does anyone wish to speak to the board about anything concerning our current agenda? Close the public input. Consideration to approve the finance report. Josh, would you take over?
Sure. So financial support has become the cash flow worship. We've got now through the middle of May, there are a whole lot of real exciting items coming through there. You see the normal items, ideas payments for revenue, I took little payments from the state of Minnesota, and then essentially payroll, and then board bills went out on the expense side. So maybe just a little bit of time spent on the two thousand twenty-two eight project reimbursement. We still have some ability to post some cash through there for interest, and that product, while it's winding down, there are still some outstanding retentions as we rattle things on the project, and some funding that we've been able to get some projects done that are on a maintenance or deferred maintenance type listing, completed with either cost savings or interest earned on that project. And some of the big ones have been the EBITDA on the outside of the building, which is a harsh $8,000 that we normally would not have been able to spend to help clear the bird holes inside the building, but as well as upgrading doors around the fieldhouse area and putting security on some of the doors for FOB access, as well as rooftop units over the kitchen in the high school. From what I understand, those aren't the last of the dinosaurs with rooftop units. So items that really aren't, you know, they're flashy or that people might notice on a day-to-date, but definitely high-dollar items that for the district, to be able to knock off our deferred maintenance list are very beneficial to a district, and I think it puts a long way into showing, using the funds as best we can, getting a product done on time, but also having some funding to get some bigger items taken care of in the deferred maintenance area and not have to go to find ways to fund those and be able to get some of the products done now that freezes, they're done, but there's a push-up on the criteria list. Just thought it'd kind of be nice to note those items in the financial report of areas where we're doing good things with the funds that the public's providing for us. Do you have any questions? I can do my best to answer.
Seems pretty straightforward. Thank you. Any question? Josh? If not, I would look for a motion to okay the finance report.
I'll make a motion.
Julian on the motion? Seconded by?
I'll second.
Katie?
Thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor of the approval of the finance report as shown, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carry. The consent agenda. I have to look twice. Sometimes I cut Jeff off on these things, turn the page before it's time. Consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In event a board member wants to discuss any single item, it will be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. As is our custom, we, Jeff would recognize the acceptance of gifts.
Yes. Starting off with $1,500 from the Cannon Falls Fire Department for robotics, $87.45 from the Cannon Falls Housing Initiative for Balsa wood, $500 from Joe Showert for robotics, $3,500 from the CF Diamond Club for baseball for the baseball Florida trip, $535.52 from the CF Senior Center and VFW for Book Buddies, $321.32 from Bayes' Spring Garden for replacement milk cups, $250 from Gemini for Undesignated, $250 from Gemini for the Athletic Department, and then one, two, three, four, five more, $250 donations from Gemini for Undesignated, and then Gemini, $250 for art, $250 from Gemini for another designation, and then $1,000 from the VFW High School Arts Program, $1,000 from the Cannon Falls Fire Department for the Eagle Bluff Trip, $567.33 for Miss O'Brien for Social Skills Curriculum, and $3,240 from Miss Clapper for My Great Story Journal. And thank you to all of our generous donors.
Does everyone had a chance to look over the consent agenda? If you have any questions, please bring them forth, otherwise I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion too, first.
Katie on the motion? Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Clint. Further discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda as shown, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Superintendent's report. Jeff, what have you got for us?
Yes, I just have a quick update on our social media report card that we get quarterly. This was up through January of '24. We've had growth in Facebook and Instagram followers. Our average monthly reach for Facebook is almost 15,000 people, and our average monthly reach for Instagram is $500, or $500, 500 people. And you can see how we kind of compare to other schools from around the state that use that company as well. It did show a couple of our more popular posts here, from the famous turkey dinner served during Thanksgiving, to Mr. Zimmerman's residential construction class working on their house for the year. So those are some of our more popular pieces that were on our social media this year. So continues to be a big hit. We talked a little bit about that in marketing this morning, about how well that's doing, and we might have another rollout of a different social media piece coming up here in the near future that we'd like to try. So a little bit more on that coming. It is also School Board Recognition Month, and so we want to recognize all of you fine folks for all the hard work you do throughout the year, and this is borne on our certificate of appreciation from the Minnesota School Board Association. So Bob? Luke? Please pass that down to Clinton. Ryan?
Thank you.
Katie? Angela? On behalf of the school district, I know all of our staff and students and families, thank you for all of the work that you guys put in that have made this a successful district. So, thank you. Other than that, that's all I have. Very short.
Any questions for Mr. Sampson? Okay, moving on. Action items. Under new biz, consideration to approve a resignation at the close of the '23, '24 school year.
This is for Ashley Shaw, and I recommend approval.
Look for a motion to approve the resignation.
I'll make a motion.
Julian on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Luke. Further discussion? All in favor of the approval of this resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the '24, '25, '25, '26 school calendar. Mr. Sampson?
This has been a long time coming because we keep waiting on the state to get their stuff together as far as the new RED Act is concerned. The teachers have vetted these two calendars as well. I do recommend approving both of them right now, but don't be surprised if we bring back the '24, '25 calendar for an adjustment based on the training that's going to be needed for the new RED Act for all of our teachers. We may have to adjust the '25, '26 as well, but we're going to take it one year at a time. And the idea that we're currently working on right now, just so that you guys are aware of it, for the RED Act is because of the amount of training that is needed for teachers, we are probably going to make our half-day PLC days full days of staff development and take away student time on those half-days just for next year to complete the training as it sits right now. But we want to make sure that the state finalizes all of that before we come back to you. But as of right now, that would probably be the only major adjustment, unless something completely changes at the state level, if the state is still rolling out RED Act training. So I would recommend approval of these two calendars right now, so parents at least have something to start planning on.
I'll just, if I can ask one question. I know we surveyed on this. Do you mind walking back through that? I don't, I forget what the percentages were, but I know we had, the community was about 50-50, staff was a little higher, and we were looking for a little, to make a drastic change, we were looking for a little higher percentage from both, really, to make a change.
Yeah, it's awfully hard to have 50% of your community wanting to start early, and then, yeah, I think it was three-fourths of our staff that wanted to start early. And I probably should have put some of that caveats out there before that survey of what I'd be looking for, but...
Yeah, and I only brought it up because I recently got the question from a community member, and they understood once we walked through that, walked through that, we're wanting a higher percentage to make a drastic change.
Yeah, and I should have put that out there at a time that's on me. I'll leave the headline for that.
Okay.
Yep.
The questions? I would look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Is that coming from Clint first on the motion?
Yep.
Luke on the second?
Yep.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the '24, '25, '25, '26 school calendars with the possibility of future amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the '23 to '25 teachers' master agreement and the MOA for '25, '27.
Go ahead, if you had something else you wanted to say.
I'm going to pass this over eventually to Clinton, as he was our chief negotiator on this, but there is, like, maybe we settle on some language items, which...
Yeah, the language items were all listed in there, and they were relatively small items. I would say probably the bigger items this time were the financial setups to the '23, '25 contract, and then, and Clint can talk a little bit more about this, but I want to make sure that you guys understand that we agreed to an MOU for a second contract to settle the financials for the '25 to '27 contract, which would flow into the operating levy. We can talk a little bit more about that, just so that you guys have a full understanding, but I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about the teacher contract?
Yeah, well, first off, we happy to announce that we got that settled. Started this back in August, so here we are, six months later. So, big relief there. Just a few details of what the contract was. The first thing that we mutually agreed upon was reducing our steps and lanes from seventeen down to thirteen. So I think we kind of had like an agreement pretty quickly on that after about our second meeting roughly, something like that. And then, we started off going back and forth, and things kind of stalled out a little bit. But we were able to get things going again with doing something a little unorthodox, and that was setting up a four-year contract. Now, the, only the first two years are what's guaranteed. Years three and four, in order for them to come to fruition, is if an operating levy passes. And the way this looks is year one will be 5%, year two will be 5%, year three would be, if an operating levy does pass, would be 3% above what the state gives us, and year four would be 1.5% above what the state gives us. So we have no idea what year three and four will look like coming from the state, but then also, we also need the community to help us with an operating levy to get this passed to come to fruition. So, big thank you to the Ed Association for their patience and being willing to come back to the table, that we were able to avoid mediation and arbitration. We both recognized that that was by far in our best interest to get this all settled without going to that measure. So, that's kind of all I really have. This is just showing, by doing those years three and four, this is showing our commitment and our investment into our teachers, and therefore will go down to our children. So, that is what we are looking to get accomplished here, and I'm happy that we were able to get that done. Anything else they have, Bob?
Well, you used the term unorthodox. I would like to call it creative. That fits my language a little bit better. It was one of the longer sessions I've ever been involved with, and I appreciated you coming without any experience into the mix after we had started our negotiations.
And you called me two days before the first meeting.
Well, you said yes. So, and really, to put out this creative method of getting contract approval for more than the two-year term comes with a lot of extra work from Josh Davidson and Jeff Sampson. We essentially said, let's try this, let's see if it floats. Take care of those numbers for us. That's awfully difficult to do, and they did come back in creative, and then, on one hand, it really holds our feet to the fire. We're at 2.6 on our unassigned, and that gets very sickening for the teachers to hear those type of numbers time after time. And we do our best. We really have done a nice job as a school district in funding, funding our per pupil allocation higher than most any other school our size, certainly in the area. We spend money on our kids, but sometimes we, I wouldn't say forget about our teachers, but we don't prioritize them as highly as we do our kids. And so, you know, moving forward, we're going to have to, we're going to have to deal with an assigned fund balance and how to creatively move forward. And again, my, my thanks, and I'm sure it comes from Clint, to the, to our everyday people like Josh and Jeff, who put those numbers together for us. So...
I was just going to add that, before you guys wrote that, I think, I think we all get this in the room, but we do need to focus more on attractive, attracting and retaining our staff and being competitive in the job place. There needs to be attention paid to that, and I think this is a good step toward doing
You're the money guy. You worked real hard at that, at this, to at least make this proposal. Anything to add to that, or you just have your head under the table?
Do you plan to move on to something else? Yes. A lot of time and effort into it. It's a nice creative way to do it. It's going to take a lot of effort from the community to help make it support, but it's a, it took some time to get there, and I plan to move on with all the things.
You've done good. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, I would look to put this to a vote.
I would just kind of echo what everyone else said. I think the negotiation team for working through that and finding a solution that worked for the staff and for us to move forward, you know, while it wasn't on negotiations. I certainly talked to Clinton a lot, and lots of sleepless nights and hours, and put into that, and, you know, certainly contentious at times, but I think, I think the right thing was done here, and appreciate what you guys done, and Josh, Jeff, you too. So, happy, like Josh said, happy to move on and take on what's next.
Anyone else, or do we hear a motion to approve the master agreement and the MOA plus the, plus including the summary of the contract language changes?
I'll make a motion.
Julian on the motion?
I'll second.
Brian on the second? Other discussion? All in favor of the '23, '25 master agreement and the MOA for '25, '27, plus the summary of the '23, '25 language contract changes? Say aye.
Aye.
Carry. Nice to get that done and moving on. Consideration to approve the fiscal year '24 revised budget.
One number for you. To lay me a context is revised budget a couple times during the fiscal year. The last time we really looked at fiscal '24 budget, we did a preliminary budget last May. Those would be the numbers that we'd be middle of that sheet, the original budget for fiscal '24. The top is now going to be the revised budget for fiscal '24. You'll see this at least one more time before we're all wrapped up, generally in June. And that'll be pretty tight in June, although there'll be some cleanup as we get to our audit in August, but it is constantly a moving target. We try to do our best to get as close to the center of the target as we can. Some of the bigger items that maybe occurred since preliminary budget, at that time, the state was still in its session, and some of the what-if or the funding projection model that we get doesn't quite have all of the updated items in it. Some of the revenues that would be additional for, you know, the finalized session would include some cross-substitute dollars and some other, basically, really kind of problematic driven dollars that were coming to the district. Some expenditures that weren't in there, a couple of staff, one would be that the fourth grade we added a teacher to help offset some of the additional class sizes in that grade. Also, if we kind of go through the fiscal year, we start to see whether it would be items up, would be additional staffing, generally is one of the ones that costs more for districts or inflationary items. So, those are probably kind of the explanations for the increases to both revenue expenditures from a preliminary budget. In the end, what you're seeing, the difference is either the increase or the decrease to the fund balance. As Bob was saying earlier, the unassigned fund balance for our district sits at 2.6%. Our fund balance policy would have a strive for four to six, that was born from 12% to hopefully give us a little better target to kind of attainable target. So if you strive to four to six, we'll get there, we can probably adjust the policy to the levels that we probably really should be with our, at least what our auditors would kind of encourage a district our size to have. So in the top portion, you'll see, it's really a kind of balanced budget for the general fund as we see it right now for revision. What that kind of means going forward, when we start planning for fiscal '25, is the state's given a 2% increase on the formula, and as you see from the teacher settlement, part of that was 5%. So, just by that nature alone, there's going to be some reductions or movement around in funds in order to make fiscal '25 budget work out. So, as we talk through some things, you guys will be very aware that we'll be discussing reductions for fiscal '25. General fund is generally the one that's the largest to talk about, so for the one else, I'll go pretty briefly, but if anybody has anything in specific or in general about the general fund that they have a question on, I can answer it for you forward. Food service, from the original budget, you'll see that we do about negative $100,000 spend on food service. When we look at this, it doesn't include the... When we look at this, it doesn't include the fund balance which is coming initially. In food service, there's a positive fund balance carried over into fiscal 24 and the plan in food service is to replace a couple of ovens, one each of the kitchens and spend on some of that assigned fund balance. In food service, everything is assigned, there's not unassigned food service, but it'd be for that food service area. So, while we have a negative spend for the budget for food service, it will remain positive in the fund balance for food service at the end of the fiscal year. As people are aware, the state is funding food for children. It doesn't quite as the same reimbursement rate as the federal program does, so some adjustments from the revenue happen in that area from the initial budget and then obviously the expense has the two ovens in there, that's kind of the rationale for your food service. Community service is doing quite a bit better than initially planned in the preliminary budget. We were planning about $180,000 of a negative spend in community ed and got that down to the $100,000 and the largest reason for that is the mom revenue coming in is four camp kids in preschool has been ahead of schedule. So, doing better than that, yep.
What's the difference between how the state is funding for the...
It's at a higher reimbursement rate for meal.
The state is doing higher?
Federal does it higher.
Oh, federal does it higher?
Yep.
So, we are technically going backwards a touch?
Technically, I would say that we, our fund balance in food service was increasing during the federal reimbursement of lunch. But we're not going ahead as fast as the state is being funded, but not as high a rate as the federal reimbursement.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So, just that being just to just reduce the mom revenue, but we're still doing okay there.
Sure.
Yep. Not a cost to us, if that's kind of true.
Yep.
Yep. So, essentially, in community service, revenue for camp kids in preschool has been having quite well, so we adjusted a number on that, we're still on a negative spend in community service. As we've gone through a couple of audit presentations now from auditors, most districts our size in this area have negative community fund balances and that's more of a reflection of districts trying to be a good part of the community and offer services and support that may not be otherwise offered. So, essentially, if that gets to be too big a negative number, the fund balance gets to be two up and there is a mechanism where we would offset that with the general fund, which is one of the reasons why you like to build that unassigned general fund balance higher so that we can offer those services a bit better, more cost effectively. The construction is really a fund that is only in place when we have projects going on. This one, because of its nature and the length of it, we've had it for several years, really for several budgets, 22, 23, now 24, maybe in some carryover to 25, depending on just how we're able to wrap everything up. But what we're doing there is just tying it up to the actual for this fiscal year. So, the revenue is essentially interfered on account during the year, expenditures are those projects that were spent in this year. But any of our projects, so you've seen the big revenue increase in fiscal 22 and received those dollars. We were off for quite a while before we started spending those dollars, we were earning some interest as that money spends down, when we are able to cash for it, we do so so we can keep the money in the construction fund to earn some interest and it allowed us to do a lot of projects that weren't on the schedule for that project, but we're definitely on our list of either deferred maintenance or luxury facility type items that were needed to be done, but we may not have been able to get the funding for it. So, I thought we did a really good job with that project. There's still obviously some months to tie up, as retailers are figured out with the K, authorizes a final payment to some of the vendors, but all in all, I think a great project not only for the district and the kids, but I think in the financial end, we do, you got a lot of good name for the buck. Debt service is really set up to be, for lack of a word, more of our mortgage payments, so we didn't have a whole lot of say and we submit our caution documents to the county and the state, so they know what we need to receive each year for our levy to pay for it. We are in a good county in terms of collecting, they set the levy at 105% to collect and there's not a whole lot of liquid taxes in our county. So, when we get an excess fund balance in our debt service, there's a mechanism to return those dollars back to taxpayers and that reduces the amount of revenue that we'd have in the fund for the debt service. It doesn't reduce our ability to pay our debt. So, while we have less revenue than expense here, we're located to pay those debt service payments. Final one is trusted agency, that used to be forever just our scholarships and then the last couple of years, we've added a couple of items, the trust is able to carry over from year to year balance and the inside of that fund now, other than just scholarships, are for the Gemini Makerspace, we received a $100,000 donation last fiscal year for that and as we spend that down, that will decrease that balance in that fund, as well as quite a bit of additional revenue for the scoreboards, as you see all the advertising that's on these scoreboards. The first year, for instance, on the ones in the gym, advertising fully paid for the cost of those scoreboards and from going forward, there's news for items in that, either athletic or activities department to help fund, other items that are for school district and students that are fighting and receiving extra spare activities. So, those are all in trusted agency. There will generally be a negative spend in that, if some of the scholarships are based on, they will balance at the end of their calendar, not funding into it each year. And then obviously, the Makerspace is a one-time donation that as we spend down, we'll show it, I think so. So, yes, the big number is $5.3 million, so it's a little negative, but a larger than part of it is the construction and the debt service, which is set to pay up our needs. Community service, we know that there's generally gonna be a little bit negative balance there because we are offering programs that are good for our community, we're trying to support that. Food service, a negative balance is because of the positive on the side performance we do have in food service and purchases of the ovens. So, I guess what we presented today for the revised budget, again, you'll see this, or something we'll submit this in June when we get a little bit tighter and wrap things up close to the end of fiscal year. Any questions I can answer, whatever you have?
Very inclusive conversation, good job. Questions for Josh?
No, I appreciate you breaking this out, I think it's a good refresher every time it comes through, so thank you for putting time into that.
When ready, I'd like to get a motion to approve the revised 24 budget.
I'll make a motion.
To approve?
Clinton.
Clint?
I'll second it.
And Luke on the second, just throw some names out. Okay, we have a motion to second on the floor, any other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the fiscal year 24 revised budget, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carry. Consideration to approve reserving Invenergy dollars for facilities, Jeff?
This has been a yearly item, if you remember, the Invenergy dollars, that was probably been my first year that we started reserving those for facility use. And I would recommend that we do it again for this coming year as well, as we have some facility items that are in need, but I tell you, this last bond helped cover quite a bit of it, but I would again recommend that we reserve those dollars for facility use.
I've asked this several times, but it doesn't soak in always. What is our sunset year with our Invenergy?
I think we received 17 of the 20 things over the last few years, I have to check to be sure, it's on the floor, if you're there, but that's all, it's a ballpark. Between the funds we get directly from Invenergy and from the city, it's roughly $310,000. We have kind of usually $158,000, that was the kind of the debt service payment we were paying on the month we wrote at that time. Once that payment became clear, I just kind of made sense to keep, I think you're using this one for facility type items. So, that's kind of what they asked, we used to use your $158,000 for the facilities items.
In three years, those tax dollars will roll over into the regular tax roster, not exactly sure what that looks like yet, but that is how it'll happen, because we're done direct cash payments.
Yeah. Okay. So, as of today, it comes to us, we can choose where to spend? Will that change?
Well, we'll come directly through the levy.
Instead of via check or whatever it's coming now, it'll come in through our levy system.
Okay.
It's different because they were doing, I don't know if it's a tax-free when it came in, so that in order to get into the district, they go into the city and not pay taxes, except deals with the city, school and county to kind of offset or make good on those payments, but not have direct tax hit.
It's really been beneficial for us to be able to, I guess, take care of some of our facility expense without taking directly out of the budget, that's a great thing. So, I would look for a motion to approve reserving Invenergy dollars for facilities once more.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Brian and Jo Lynn on the second. Further discussion? All in favor of approving Invenergy dollars for facilities, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Review of community planning survey and timelines, Mr. Sampson?
Yeah, we'll start with the timeline here. So, we've been talking for quite a while now about the need to go out and not only renew, but also increase the operating levy that's going to be due here next fiscal year and we can start by going out this coming general election in November. And so, kind of the timeline of being able to survey the community to see what their tax tolerance is, if any, for an operating increase and then also getting us to July, which we would need to pass a resolution if we were gonna go out in November, we need to have it passed at the July board meeting because of when that is due, it's actually due before our August board meeting. And so, this is kind of a timeline that includes the survey, which we'll get to here in just a second, and then the results of the survey from the community will be on April 8th at that board meeting. And so, the board will have from April 8th until July 2nd decided at, one, if you want to go out for an operating levy increase and two, what that increase would look like based off of the information from the survey. The survey itself, I included, I've been working with Sue Peterson from ISG on this to help plan a referendum and part of it is, instead of just throwing darts at a number, we are asking the community to see what their tax tolerance is. We start off by asking for some demographics. I should say that the community will be notified of the survey via a postcard with a QR code on there, or they can go to our website and print off a copy of the survey if they wish not to use the electronic means of it. Basically, we would notify the community and parents via email, pretty much what we did like our last survey. But we ask for some quick demographic information here. We talk about the referendum funding, how an operating levy is different from a facility bond, which we just passed a couple of years ago. Give some background on school funding information and how we compare to other districts around us that not only touch us, but are within our conference as well, and that is on page three. So, these are the total taxes that people are paying for both operating and bonded debt and you can see, we're kind of near the bottom of those listed there and we're below the state average. So, we give them that information, we give them our challenges of what we are facing now for funding. If you take a look at this chart, and I'm gonna use this chart if and when we go out for an operating levy, if you look at 20 years ago, which ironically, this is when we started the $500 per pupil funding, right, 20 years ago, without an inflationary factor. So, this shows a chart of how, without inflation, what the funding gap has been over the past 20 years and roughly $1,300 per student. So, keep that number in mind as we look at what we're asking for from the community. The questions here, one, we gotta figure out if they are interested in supporting increasing our operating levy, yes or no, pretty simple. And if they are saying no, which means that we will probably still continue budget cutting and we want them to give us some ideas where they wish to see budget cuts, so we ask them to tell us that, so that we have that information. And then, if they are a yes, please tell us what level of support you would give us, either zero, which is if they're a no, they're gonna probably move zero. But we do give them kind of three choices to aim at so that we get an idea of where to be at when we go out on the ballot, it will be one number, whether it's 750, 1,000 or 1,250. To put one number on the ballot along with an inflationary piece in it as well. And so, we would, the 750, 1,000 and 1,250 is in addition to the 500. So, when you're talking to people, make sure you keep that in mind. And so, then these would be the additional costs, the property taxes, and if you look at the $300,000 limit that we looked at on this chart back up here, so if we look at option two, $750 increase, that's $215 per year on a $300,000 house. And the highest one is 1,250 and that's 359, so if you go back up to this chart up here, if you add $250, that puts us right around just above the state average and still keeps us in the middle of the road. And if you add $300 to it, you're still not reaching the three diet school districts that are listed up here. Does that make sense? So, survey, going back to timeline, the postcard is set to land in mailboxes next week on March 4th. Survey will be emailed out to staff and parents as well, so that they get a personal invite, if you will. There will be survey reminders sent out on a weekly basis. Survey closes on March 29th and then we get the results at the board meeting with Sue Peterson on April 8th. Question?
A lot to absorb, so make sure you do your homework and be able to speak from your authority on what's going on here. We have time to review that, so that's really a nice survey, Sue has done a nice job for us on several of our endeavors, I would guess.
Yeah, absolutely. No action needed on this, this is just letting you guys know what's going out so that we can gather information to come back to us again.
Okay. Even though it's not an action item, is there any questions for Jeff? Moving on. Consideration to approve a 10-cent meal price increase for 2425 school year, that was a head scratcher, teller.
Yes.
I read a little deeper, so go ahead.
So, as we talked about earlier, the state is paying for school lunches right now. However, if the state decides to ever move away from doing that, we would have to go back to our current meal price that we left last year and so, we can only increase our prices by 10 cents a year, by state law. Is that the best way to say that, Lauren? And so, we feel it's in our best interest, at least for a while, so we feel more confident that the state's gonna continue to fund lunches to increase the amounts, to stay on pace if they would ever pull that back. So, recommend that we do approve that.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
Clinton on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. All in favor of the 10-cent meal price index for 2425, if needed, correct?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carry. Consideration to approve the 2324 spring coaching list.
Mr. Olson is here. You guys have questions, but this is updated from what we have as of now. You guys have questions, but this is updated from what we have as of now?
No, we still have a couple vacancies here. We did have an offer that went out for the head girls golf coach that was turned down today. And we have another lead on potential, one of the secondary levels for golf. But we need to continue to recruit and, and find somebody to fill those roles here. And I don't have any answer to any questions.
Everything else appears to be full, with the exception of golf.
Just, just one more, one more junior high softball to help out, and then the golf, the three golf positions. Everything else is still.
Questions for Reed? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the 23, 24 spring coaching list.
Make a motion.
Jo Lynn on the motion? Seconded by?
I'll second.
Luke?
Yep.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve the second reading of policy 427.1 caseload size and special ed.
Yeah, this is a second reading of this policy. Unless you guys have questions, I recommend approval of the policy.
Look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Katie on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jo Lynn. Other questions or comments? All in favor of the approval of the second reading of policy 427.1 caseload? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Carrie. Consideration to approve the second reading of policy 606.5 library materials and formal request.
Same thing, this is the second reading of this policy, and unless you guys have questions, I recommend approval.
The only question I had was, last time we talked, Bob and Jeff, you weren't here, this will be included in our student handbook going forward.
Yep.
Both of them will be, right? Or is the one?
No, the one's more of a staff.
Okay.
Piece, I guess, for caseloads.
Right.
And then library materials, is that in the current handbook?
No, I don't think we had one.
No, this is a brand new policy.
Yeah, this is brand new.
Okay.
Yeah. Because we didn't have one going before that, and it was recommended with current situations to have one, so that we have a way to.
I'm sure it'll probably be at least referenced in the handbooks, especially.
By the way, I will plan on speaking out of turn, but thank you for being proactive on having this in place so that we do have a definite path if we would need one.
Makes it a lot less sticky.
Yes.
Yeah, I guess I would, I'd like to see it in the student handbook, so everyone's aware, your teacher, your parents are aware on that.
Had there been some situations that have come up?
Not for our district so far, but nationwide, it's going crazy right now, so.
Look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Jo Lynn on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the second reading of policy 606.5? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Potential action on the finance committee recommendation. Jeff?
We had a finance committee meeting last week to talk about revised budgets, and also about the potential of cuts coming into next year's budget as well. Josh kind of alluded to that a little bit. There is a recommendation from the finance committee to make $400,000 in cuts into next year's budget, and so we need to start planning that as now. The reasons for the $400,000 in cut are, are threefold. A lot of it does, deal with staffing, one, the finality of the, the teacher contract that was just settled, and having to budget for those items, with only getting 2% from the state that having settled for 5%. The second item is the anticipated cost of support staff negotiations, which usually follows the, the teacher's contract. And so we will need to make accommodations in the budget for that, and then also inflation as well in that piece. So those are the three biggest items coming from the reasons for the $400,000 cuts. I don't know if you wanted to spend upon that at all.
No, and it carries over from what we talked about with revised budgets and those items. And just kind of the necessity to, the operating referendum is actually maybe part of that that plays into all that. Even if we weren't to be successful, you know, we can't pay for that. Those funds aren't going to be received for fiscal 25. That kind of all combined with where the assigned fund balance is, there's really not a whole lot of, do we wait to absorb some of that expense for the short term? And if you do that and balance the budget, there will need to be reductions.
The process for reductions, I'm going to ask the board to direct me to bring back $400,000 worth of cuts to maybe the March meeting that we have. There won't be any names or anything like that, but it would just be high-level type areas. And then if there's staffing that's involved with that, those would be finalized at the first April board meeting with that as a timeline as we prepare for finalizing the budget that happens in May. So.
Jeff? Typically, when we have to make reductions, and we do from time to time, you're not the sole decision maker for that, bringing your recommendation to us. Do you look at department heads, or where does this come from?
We mainly discuss this through administration and where those cuts are going to come from, and what we have available for cuts, and how deep in the, basically, when you make cuts, you just can't throw darts and say we need to cut this, because sometimes that affected in many different areas of programming. So we have to all see how all of that fits together. And if we do make a cut that's deep, then we would have to make sure that we are fully prepared for that and that it makes sense. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. I think our previous discussion, we've at least all been aware that this is, this is coming, and certainly some of this has to do with our, our lessening of students, if you will, our ADM is shrinking.
Yeah, there's some rightsizing.
Yeah, and so that's, you know, as a board, we're called upon to, when there is rightsizing to be done, to be those people, to make those decisions, and, and we look to you to rationalize those decisions, so.
Yep.
Anything for, for Mr. Sampson at this time?
No, I would just include in that too, you know, during COVID, we, we were receiving funds and we invested into people and, and our students with positions and whatnot, and then that has now gone away, and, and we retained some of those because we knew it was important for our kids and whatnot, and, and, you know, so that's part of that. We, we chose as a board, and this is, you know, I think right when I got on the board is, we wanted to invest in those things and keep those kids catching up and whatnot. So we knew we were spending, so this is all plays in a, a part of that, yeah, well.
And, and we're not the only district in the state that's going through this right now for a lot of the same reasons. I don't think we have it as bad as some districts, but we still, cuts are never even.
So you'll come back to us with what exactly you're?
We recommend.
Would be recommended to be cut specifically?
You know, in the past, what we've, whether or not that's good or not, as we, we went past the 400 stage and went to a higher number, and then maybe pared down priorities. Is that something you've done in the past?
I can bring back more than 500 and see where your priorities are, but we also have to make sure that it fits into our programming administrative, so we have to be a little careful with that.
Yep. Okay. Or mine. So is this an action item?
Yeah, I'd like you guys to correct me if, if you guys are, want to go from the finance committee recommendation to direct me to bring back $400,000.
Board liaisons to finance, were you available for that meeting or not?
Yep. Yep, both Clinton and I were, were in that finance meeting when we walked through those.
Rationale is good, you're recommending this 400,000 and?
This, this is a good start. For being real.
Being real. It's true.
Yeah. We gotta, we gotta start somewhere.
Yeah.
And this is where we start and go from there.
So that's the recommendation from the committee, and you as our liaison.
Yeah, correct.
Okay. And 400,000 is the number that we're dealing with right now.
Yep.
So we look for a motion to approve the finance committee recommendations for 400,000 to be brought back by the superintendent. Sound right? Look for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Luke on the motion, Jo Lynn on the second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Carrie. Busy night. You know, one meeting a month, we do committees, and we, and we punch in to our respective committees and say what's going on in the particular committee. Our newest member has been boning up on his WTEC after attending the very first meeting, and he was diligently working today to make sure that he gave us a nice presentation. Calling you out because WTEC is actually your strength. How did that, how did your first meeting go? You don't need to committee us, but how did the first meeting go?
It's exciting to get to talk at a program here. This is big. I get to share with the information we talked about at WTEC.
Well, we don't necessarily need the update, but I, how did?
It went, it went really good. Kind of, we met with the other schools while we were there that we, that we had to co-op with, and Aaron led us through kind of what we might be seeing ahead as, as they look at potentially a, a different way of protecting our data that we have here. And in the fall, we could be looking at having a vote on potential costs involved with upgrading our data protection system. That was kind of the main, the biggest thing that they, they talked about, but.
Were you familiar with WTEC before?
No, I was not.
So you weren't, you weren't aware of the consortium of districts?
Right, I learned a lot in one night.
Yeah.
Perfect. Great.
And Aaron seems to be a really knowledgeable guy and a good person to take.
Yeah. I have a really heavy back computer background, was a pure science major for a while, so I kind of fit well with, with this, with this meeting and, and know all the information, was aware of much of the information that I need to bring.
So I am so happy that you're the WTEC rep, because I have been, and it certainly, to put it mildly, it's certainly not my strength. So I appreciated you and, and your excitement about being named on there, and look forward to your report next meeting.
About my niche.
Anything else before we part?
Yeah, just before we adjourn, and before we miss it, I want to thank Ashley Shaw for her time here, her dedication to the district. I know the students and families that have had her loved her, so she'll be missed, and thank her for her time here.
Good point. Anything else? You see items coming up at our next board meeting. We don't show a lot. If there's anything there that you need or think you need to put on the agenda, please contact either Jeff or Lori and plug into us whether we can get that on for an agenda item. Having said that, and nobody else is offering anything, I would look for a motion to adjourn our meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Brian? If you do this well enough, Brian, you could, you could motion this, sometimes we wait a minute. Motion by Brian, seconded by Luke for adjournment. Any other discussion? All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?